Captain, I pray for justice.
Yes.
What happened?
Mr. Chair.
Resident assaulted a police chief back or whatever that was, like 2012 or so.
Why?
He's being told to leave the house cameras because he's causing disturbance and so could be following a kid.
Oh, we're going out loud. Enjoy your assault. Call this to order. May I get a roll call? Paul Rayford.
Here.
Creech.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Gladney.
Here.
Lubek.
Here.
Hudson Senior. Peak. Absent. Swerkas. Is that how I pronounce it?
Swerkas.
Swerkas?
Swerkas.
Absent.
Swerkas rhymes with circus.
And then Stokes is here. All right, moving on to approval of agenda, would I need a motion for that?
I'll move that we approve the agenda as submitted for tonight's meeting.
Support.
Any discussion on the motion?
Administration has anything.
Discussion on a motion.
Any discussion on the motion?
Yes.
It's Miss Gladney.
Okay, if you guys can follow me to... You got me voted again twice on page.
No, this is approval of the agenda, not.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I approve the agenda.
Okay. Any other discussion on the approval of the agenda? Roll call, please. Wilson?
Yes.
Paul Rayford?
Yes.
Gladney?
Yes.
Stokes, yes. Creech?
Yes.
Lubek?
Yes.
I would now open the floor to the hearing of the public. Being none, moving on to the approval of minutes.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, the March 17th minutes that were reviewed last month have been revised. However, we still did not determine who approved those meetings, if anyone can remember back that far. If no one remembers, we can dig the archives up and do it that way.
Yeah, nobody's going to speak up, I think we will have to.
Thank you. So the revisions that were suggested last time have been made, I did double check all those. This would be for the March 17th.
May I get a motion for approval of minutes, March 17, 2022?
Okay, who, was there a discussion about corrections? Was that for the March 17th?
Excuse me, what's the date on that?
March 17, 2022.
Okay, I'll move for the approval based on.
Motion by Hall Leford?
Yeah.
Can you get a second?
I'll support that.
I'll support. Any discussion on the?
Yes, there is a discussion.
Proceed.
On page seven. Section three. You guys haven't gone here twice again for the five minutes. When Lubek has commented regarding the five minute time limit, would like to change it from three minutes? From regarding the five minutes to would be like to be changed to three minutes. And so you guys have me yes for yea- 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 nay again twice.
You are correct.
Well, look at that.
And which was your actual vote?
It should be nay because I wanted to, wanted it for five minutes instead of three minutes.
Thank you for catching that.
And then... It may not make a difference, but on page eight, that should be next instead of net, like net worth. Up at the last sentence.
Ed next.
So it should be E-N-Y-X-T.
I'm sorry, where is that?
That's in Board Member Comments. On page eight, Board Member Comments.
Page eight.
The last line on the right side.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Oh, next meeting. Okay.
All right, I'd ask advice, do we make a motion to accept the minutes as altered? Or do we need to alter them and approve them next meeting? Okay, would we make a motion to accept minutes with alterations? Or do we have to get them altered and have them approved at the next meeting?
We could approve at this meeting.
Right, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of March 17th as corrected.
I support.
May I get a roll call, please? Just as a correction here, Lubek originally supported that motion, but we're going to move to. Right, it's a new motion.
So didn't the other one need to be rescinded?
Yes, it would. There's a roll. Paul Rayford?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Stokes, yes. Creech?
Yes.
Gladney?
Yes.
Lubek.
What am I voting on?
Approval of minutes as corrected for March 17, 2022.
And it's a yes vote. Wanted to make sure I knew what I was voting with because there was a concern about whether or not we had to.
Yeah, we did not rescind the first motion before we made the second motion, that was my mistake. And we have parliamentary training coming up, so there we go.
We'll fix that next week.
Right. Moving on to approval minutes of April 21, 2022.
Okay, I guess I'm not happy with what I just did because I saw it here and it hit me a different way. But to get this into discussion. I'll make a motion to approve these minutes.
For April 21st?
For April 21st.
Question on the motion?
For discussion? Proceed, sir.
See, there was a discussion regarding the language of what constitutes a quorum of the zoning board of appeals. The board discussed changing the language to a majority of the members instead of a set number to constitute a.
Wait, wait, we're having discussion, did we have a support for the motion?
Oh, we didn't get a second, so. I'll support. You'll support? Moving on to discussion of the motion? Proceed, Mr. Creech.
Yes, I said, I said there was, there was a discussion regarding the language of what constitutes a quorum for the zoning board of appeals. The board discussed changing the language to a majority of the members instead of a set number to constitute a quorum. This will also be applicable when a zoning ordinance is updated. And then as I said before too, it goes over here for revised draft of April 22, 22. And it says right here, five mi, five members constitutes a quorum. A majority vote of those present in voting is required for a motion of approval or denial. Last time we had to have four, now we only have to have three.
No, it should be five. Two is a alternate and five will represent a one.
So what constitutes a quorum here?
Mr. Creech, are you referring to what's in the preface? I mean, I know what you're saying.
Right, I mean, if, if, if we go ahead and accept these minutes, then if it said, we had last time, as I said, this says five members constitutes a quorum. A majority vote of those present in voting is required for a motion of approval or denial.
Okay, but I think we have to approve the minutes as, as they occurred.
Right.
So this is what would happen then, but we're still working on the preface tonight.
Oh, well.
That's why I was asking, I was trying to make.
Why?
That was the discussion then.
Right, and I'm just going to say, if, if we accept it, is it the majority of the members?
No. The, the way I'm reading this, this is what, because it does say draft, this was the discussion that took place. Not that it was voted on necessarily, but it was the discussion that took place.
There was a discussion of the item, not a change of the item.
Pardon me?
There was a discussion of the item, not a change of the.
Right. So I mean, if we're proving that that discussion took place with the approval of the minutes. Am I not correct?
Yeah, that was, there was a discussion.
It was a discussion.
It was a discussion, there was no vote taken to change anything.
No, that's why we're working on.
The board to, our discussion among, among the board on the language of the quorum. And that's what we're proving, is that there was a discussion during that meeting of that.
Right.
Are you satisfied, sir?
Yes, I am, thank you. Nice one, clarity.
Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Uh, yes. Actually, I wish I had caught this on the previous set of minutes, but I didn't. I object to the word excused being used here. Because excused implies there's an unexcused. And we specifically had a long discussion about what's excused and what's not excused in having to set up that criteria. If you want to include the people that are not at the meeting here, which really, I think, pretty much is done when you do the roll call, you would not have to include them in each roll call vote thereafter. It's only during attendance that they would show absent. Now, up here, beginning, there were three people that were absent at the last meeting. Two had followed the procedure to call in and advise, and apparently one didn't. But all three should only be listed as absent. This is my opinion. Because otherwise, we have to set up a criteria for what's going to be excused and unexcused.
Which this commission decided not to, this board did not want to do. So that same change should be made where all the votes are, it should say absent, not excused throughout the.
It really wouldn't even need to be in all the votes because it's already recorded that they were absent during the roll call. So you would only have to have under those as the yays, the nays, and any abstains if there were any. If that's making any sense to you.
Okay, I have a question then. If a person follows the procedure and calls and that someone knows they're not going to be here, wouldn't that be considered an excused absence? Versus someone not showing up?
You're setting up criteria, we had decided we didn't want to.
Well, but I think at some point, we have to have something in place if we're going to, if there's a problem with attendance somewhere down the line. And we want to recommend that person be removed.
So basically, what she's saying is, if someone, just say for example, the two people that's not here today, or one of them board members that's not here today. If they did call in and they told you whatever it was, they called the chair, and the chair said okay, then that right there was an excused absence. Even though they're absent, but they called in and.
They followed the procedure.
Right, they followed the procedure and they said okay. And so when we look at this, then opposed to no show, no call, or you didn't talk to anybody, or you didn't send an email. When we look at this, and if it's just absent and they called in, that looks as if they're just absent and they didn't speak with anybody. Even though we know that they was, even though we know that they wasn't present. So we need something to clarify that.
All right.
For example, Stokes. Can we use your break now? Okay, so the last meeting, he wasn't present. And so we went on through the procedures, we voted, he wasn't present. So we just going to assume that he had an excused absence. And so how she has it worded here, saying he was excused, like her since he was excused.
The problem with evaluating things in the future is, is if every call in is considered excused, then I can call in 12 meetings in a row and I'm excused, so there can't be any repercussions.
Okay, so Jeff, what I'm hearing you say.
Counselor, wasn't there a section that referred to specifically to poor attendance?
Under the, under the bylaws adopted on April 21 of this year. And I'll just read it verbatim for, for the board's consideration, anybody watching at home. It says, "A ZBA member shall notify the city administration and the ZBA chairperson in advance if they are going to be absent from a meeting. If any member of the ZBA is absent from three consecutive regularly scheduled meetings, then that member shall be considered delinquent. Delinquency shall be grounds for the East Point City Council to remove a member from the ZBA for non-performance of duty or misconduct after holding a public hearing on the matter. The ZBA secretary shall keep attendance records and shall notify the city council whenever any ZBA member is absent from three consecutive regularly scheduled meetings, so the city council can consider further action allowed under law or excuse the absences." So that section, which is under Article Two, Section Two attendance, doesn't really get into whether a person calls in and whether the board deems their absence excused or not. It just refers to three consecutive regularly scheduled meetings, whether they call in or not. And that would then be considered delinquent. So if some person calls in once and then attends three meetings in a row and then is absent for the next two, that technically would not be a violation of the bylaws as currently drafted.
And I believe we had the same issue with the planning commission, there was a similar discussion about trying to define. And so the, the idea was if there are three absences, then those circumstances would, can, it's not must, but can be brought to city council to then make the decision.
At this, the same situation that we're talking about now is the same situation I talked about before. I talked about before. What is judgment of three consecutive meetings, considering we don't have consecutive meetings?
Mr. Member Creach, that was why it was the scheduled meeting, so when the.
I mean, even, if, if, if you do that, I mean, it'd be the same thing. Since they're not really consecutive, you, you would say three scheduled meetings per year.
Well, they actually would be considered consecutive, consecutive scheduled meetings. If a month goes by and there isn't a meeting, that, that, that month does not count.
That's not a scheduled meeting.
Right.
You would have to miss three scheduled meetings. Three times, you've got a packet and said, "I'm not coming."
Right.
Then that is grounds for dismissal.
And that's grounds, too, that doesn't mean you're dismissed.
Right.
That, that puts the process into play, then.
Yep.
I, I guess, I, I don't care for the word consecutive. I see scheduled, I mean, because we're scheduled each month. But that, you know, as I said, consecutive, no.
Well, if, if the board wanted to change its bylaws, it has the right to do that.
I don't think that's really necessary. As written, you'd have to miss three meetings. You had to get three packets, ignore it three times, and then it's in process. And it would probably be more than three. Not missing three months, it'd be missing three meetings.
Three meetings.
You were called for three meetings, and you ignored three meetings. It doesn't matter if that was January, February, and October. There's your three.
If a month passes and a regularly scheduled ZBA meeting is not scheduled, that month does not count.
Count. I think that's self-evident.
This, this board is an at-need.
Right.
Situation. It's not like city council where first and third Tuesday of the month, except when they alter it for various reasons, or some of the other commissions that purposefully have a monthly meeting. This zoning board of appeals will meet on the third Thursday of the month as needed, which means if there's no business to conduct.
There's no meeting.
We don't meet. So if the first meeting is in January and you miss it, the next time a meeting is called in July and you miss it, and the next meeting is called in December and you miss it, you've missed three meetings in a row.
Yeah.
Because our meetings only occur as needed, not as a specific date on a calendar. So it doesn't matter how much time is between the meetings. If three meetings were called months apart, and you missed all three, you've missed three consecutive meetings.
Well, the, the consecutive, yes, I understand. Scheduled, no, I don't. Because if even if you look at the board, January, February, March.
We are scheduled to meet as needed. So I don't understand the, the confusion. Scheduled as needed. Not scheduled because it's the third Thursday of the month.
I understand that. I just said the word consecutive. That's all I don't understand.
Consecutive. You missed three scheduled meetings.
There you go.
One, two, three. Three packets ignored, that's grounds for dismissal. Is that clear enough, Harvey?
Yes.
All right. So do we need to change, uh, the language on the minutes from excused to absent?
Yes, Mr. Chair, and then also to remove the excused under each motion, since that is not necessary, as pointed out by Madam Gladney.
Uh, who made the motion to approve?
Lubek.
Mr. Lubek, do you withdraw that, so we can make a new motion?
I make, I make a motion to approve the minutes as amended. I'll amend my motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Very good.
Support.
May I get a roll call, please? Creach?
Yes.
Gladney?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Stokes, yes. Paul Rayford?
Yes.
Lubek?
Yes. And now, I would like to make a motion to reconsider the March minutes for purposes of making the same changes as we just made here with the excused, the absences, and where they are taking place, so that they will only show up underneath the roll call and not under each individual vote.
Well, I would argue that this would be from this point forward, sort of change. I, I see no reason to go retractively from these minutes, from April minutes forward, that is how we will proceed. We get into parliamentary, parliamentary problems to reverse a vote already taken.
So my motion dies for lack of support, is what it sounds like.
That's the discussion. Uh, is there a second?
And we don't discuss till we have support on a motion. And there is a motion on the floor, but there doesn't seem to be support for it.
I stand corrected. Is there support for the motion?
Okay, the motion dies for lack of support.
Moving on, the Zoning Board of Appeals' preface.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Um, that this preface, um, is based on some revised and best practices. This is the preface that will be read at the beginning of every meeting as part of the agenda. It will be listed actually on the agenda, as you see. Um, actually, it's actually listed right now. So, the Section Five Zoning Board of Appeals' preface, we, we actually probably don't need to do that, because it's still to be reviewed under unfinished business. I was jumping into the review, and I realized that's not right.
Okay, so, number five, we don't have a preface to read at this point in time, because it's not approved.
Correct.
Yeah, that's correct.
But if it had been approved, this would be the point in the meeting where we would read it.
It hasn't been officially adopted yet.
Okay.
Yes, so this would be where it would be in, in the agenda.
But it is not this time. So, that being said, moving on to unfinished business. Review and adaptation or adoption of the final preface.
Mr. Chair and board members, this is a revised and shortened preface based on best practices that will be read, as you see on the agenda at every meeting. The former preface that was much more detailed and lengthy and listed, all the items will be included in the application package with detailed instructions to any applicant as to the steps that they have to meet. Um, but this would be something that would be read. It is shortened, and the, really, the focus is on meeting the, um, the criteria of, of practical difficulty. To meet that, that is the first step that has to be met before any of the others, other criteria can be considered by this board. We are actually working on some de, more detailed plain English instructions for applicants that list out, um, each of the steps and the criteria that has to be met. Um, and they will actually have to answer, um, in addition to their entire sub, uh, submission, they will actually have to answer those questions on their own and submit that with their packet.
Well, I believe I could open this up for discussion before I ask for a motion. So is there any discussion on unfinished business, a review and adaptation of the final preface?
Okay, I'm confused about the one sentence regarding the number that constitutes the quorum, because normally, four would constitute a quorum out of sev, of seven members, not five. So is there a specific reason why there are five that constitute a quorum in this?
Yes, actually, one of the, um, best practices with zoning boards of appeal is that, um, applicants are, are truly looking for an odd number, so that they are not left with a tie vote. So, as, as opposed to the four, the, the five is selected, so that there, there would not be a tie vote, and that therefore, the, the business would actually be finished at the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Apparently, based on the minutes, we had a discussion about this at the last meeting, and it stayed at five. So, that makes perfect sense. I, I, I know in the past, a long time ago, when we used to do use variances, that had a higher threshold, which, by the way, the Zoning Board of Appeals decided we didn't want to do use variances, because it effectively rezoned the property. And at that time, the Zoning Board of Appeals felt that. They have no business doing rezoning. There is a specific process for that that should be followed. But what would typically happen is that needed a little higher of a majority than normal, and if we did not have seven members present, the board used to specifically ask the applicant, "Do you want to proceed tonight, understanding we're not at full strength?" And, or, "Would you rather delay this until we have seven members present?" And, uh, most of them would delay it, a few didn't. And when it didn't go their way, they were kind of upset and realized that they maybe should have. But I, I kind of like this idea. If you have five people, you shouldn't have a deadlock vote. Um, and if somebody's abstaining, they shouldn't have been abstaining, because we have alternates. So if there's a conflict that's going to cause you to abstain on a vote, that's where the alternates come into play. So.
Very well.
That's my two cents worth on it.
Very well. Is there any further discussion?
All right, I'll make a motion that we adopt the Zoning Board of Appeals' preface as presented.
That's the point.
Any further discussion? Being done, ask for a roll call. Does it adopt Zoning Board of Appeals' preface as, as written?
Yes. Written or presented or?
Yes. Stokes, yes. Paul Rayford?
Yes.
Creach?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Gladney?
Yes.
Lubek?
Yes.
Very well. Motion passes. Moving on to unfinished business. Section B, joint training session with Planning Commission, tentative date of June 16th, 2022.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Please.
Um, the Planning Commission did not have a quorum at its meeting two weeks ago, so they did not meet and therefore, uh, viewed the dates that this board had selected as potential dates. Um, we are holding, uh, we were asking this board to hold June 16th, so that we can take that to the Planning Commission, uh, in two, two weeks, two weeks when the, the Planning Commission meets, um, and see if, if we can get everybody there, or majority of, of the members there for the joint meeting.
Very well. I don't believe there's any further discussion or vote on that.
The board could pass a motion setting that date as approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals, just so it's official.
I'll make a motion that we do that, that we accept the date of June 16th, 2022, as the tentative date for joint training with the Planning Commission.
Support.
Discussion, further discussion? Being done, may I get a roll call? Wilson?
Yes.
Gladney?
Yes.
Creach?
Yes.
Paul Rayford?
Yes.
Stokes, yes. Lubek?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Moving on.
Question.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I should have crossed this before. There's no time. Was there a specific time? Are we going to meet at seven on that date, or is there going to be a time change?
I believe the tentative time is six o'clock.
Pardon me?
I believe that the tentative time is 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, June 15th.
Is, is it a date? Yes.
June 16th.
I'm sorry?
June 16th.
June 16th.
At six, okay.
Moving on to the public hearings, which there are none. Any new business on the agenda? Uh, very well, moving on to board member comments. That certainly was an interesting and concise meeting. Uh, anybody else care to add comments? Mr. Stokes?
I have none.
Ms. Gladney?
No.
Ms. Creach?
I, I just had a few comments on the, to say the Board of Appeals' bylaws, so.
Uh, it's not on the agenda this time.
Pardon me?
I don't think that's on the agenda this time.
Okay, I'm just gonna say this. I don't see it on there, but.
That, that is it?
That's fine.
Very well. Ms. Paul Rayford?
Of course I have something to say.
Proceed.
I'm glad we were able to move this meeting as quickly as we did.
Mr. Lubek?
Yes, I have a couple of comments this evening. One, uh, wanna wish a speedy recovery to one of our colleagues and fellow city volunteers. He serves on the Planning Commission, John DeHaan, he had knee surgery today.
Ow.
So may he get back walking on his feet again quickly. Uh, like to wish everybody a happy Memorial Day. And I just noticed something, that we no longer have a second hearing of the public in these meetings.
Yes, it is.
The public hearing being none, moved on?
No, a public hearing is not the same as a hearing of the public. A public hearing is a specific.
Items.
Hearing for specific agenda items, whereas the hearing of the public, let me choose my words carefully, is where the.
Correct.
Community has the opportunity to comment. And I just know, we used to have two of them. Have we eliminated one, or was that just a, an oversight, including by me, because I think I'm the one who made the motion to approve this agenda?
And I did not catch that also. Um, Section Seven should actually be labeled hearing of the public, for the second hearing of the public. Um, had there been any applicants, we would have had the public hearings for items scheduled for public hearing, as opposed to the hearing of the public. You, you are correct.
I'm a little bit confused. I'm thinking of the second hearing of the public being item nine, which then would be followed by board comments and adjournment. The, the second hearing of the public would take place after the Zoning Board of Appeals has conducted all its business.
You are correct. That is a mistake.
So in future agendas, that will be added to, between new business and board member comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Excuse me. I mean, I, I know, as I said, we're not there again, too, but the Zoning Board of Appeals' bylaws, it's, it's in there. Roll call, approval of the agenda, hearing of the public, approval of minutes, public hearings, new business, unfinished business, and board member comments.
What they're saying is we, we missed the second hearing of the public.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's what they're adding.
And what item would that, and what number would that be?
That would have been nine.
So I think what Mr. Creach is saying here, if I'm understanding him correctly, is that we have to revise our bylaws, Article Five, order of business. Because there are at least, quickly looking at this, two items missing. One being the, uh, Zoning Board of Appeals' preface.
Correct.
And the second hearing of the public. So we'll have to, on our next agenda, put on there a bylaws revision.
Yes, sir.
I could have sworn I thought we did that, but I guess I was in the confusion of order whether to put new business for old unfinished business.
I think that was it.
I think that's where we got lost in that one.
Yeah. Yeah.
And where would we do the reading of the preface?
Second hearing of the public would come after-
Unfinished business.
-unfinished business. So that would be eight?
Well, no, be careful, because you have to put in at five the preface.
Okay, so that would be nine. All right, got you.
And actually, as I'm looking at this-
So would that go before the first hearing of the public? Reading of the preface?
Well, we have two examples in front of us. One, what is in our bylaws that we are revising, and the second one was the agenda we followed this evening. So-
So it should have been in the bylaws?
The preface definitely should be put in place before business items.
So, yeah, where's, on today's agenda, where it says one word, the Zoning Board of Appeals preface, that's where it would be read?
Yes, so I agree, that should be five.
Second hearing would be nine?
Would it be after new business?
Well-
No. It's usually after all the business.
Well, actually, with the new bylaws, new business will be first and then unfinished When the, the bylaws are adopted.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I may, I would suggest that the preface be number, the new number five in the bylaws, since that, following that would be public hearing for specific agenda items, and that way, everybody, applicants and anyone wishing to speak on a topic are aware of what the requirements are.
Well, would we be required to make a motion for these changes, Counsel?
Yes.
Actually, they will come to us in the form of a bylaws revision at-
At the next meeting.
-the next meeting for us to approve.
Very well.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may, as far as the second hearing of the public, as opposed to public hearings for specific agenda, that should most likely come between unfinished business and Board Member comments.
Very well. We all in agreement with that?
Yes.
Excellent.
So much for that quick meeting.
Right?
Well, better now than later.
And actually, these bylaws were adopted April 21st.
So if you do a motion to adopt revised bylaws?
So once adopted, shouldn't they, they appear as amendments?
Well, what is, what do the bylaws say about amending the bylaws? Because they always do.
Down the rabbit hole we go.
Article Eight, Amendments. These bylaws may be amended by at least a two-thirds vote of the entire membership of the ZBA, provided notice of the proposed change is given at a previous meeting.
Okay.
So that notice that they're going to be changed at a previous meeting is tonight, so that next month we can approve those changes. That's the way I'm interpreting it, and I believe Counsel is in agreement with that.
Yes, that's correct. It'll be on the, at next month's agenda.
Or the next meeting?
Yeah, the next meeting's agenda, thank you. But we are meeting next month.
Excuse me, since I started all this, how did it end? What are we changing and where are we?
Okay, we're changing where the number of the, the reading of the preface-
Right.
-and adding a second hearing of the public after unfinished business and before Board Member comments.
Right, so that would be nine, wouldn't it?
So, yeah, we are just amending Article Five, the Order of Business.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Creach, is there any other discussion like to start on this while we're doing this?
No, we haven't discussed it, we're not going to.
Well, very- Considering this is Board Member comments, we generally wouldn't have any motions for anything at this point.
But, anything else? Very well, may I get a motion?
And I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:47 PM. Let's take off. Is there support for that motion?
Support.
Yeah.
Creach?
Yes.
Gladney?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Stokes, yes. Paul Rayford?
Yes.
Thank you for showing up.
Yes. Any voting nay, you're welcome to stay here on your own.
Thank you all so much.